I'd like to call the first meeting of the Cape Elizabeth School Board, New School Board, to order. We're going to start with a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
As it is our first meeting, it is my duty to ask if there are any nominations for Board Chair.
It is my privilege to nominate Mary Townsend for School Board Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Are there any further nominations?
You mean any discussion?
No, I mean any further nominations? Seeing none, I will call nominations closed. Is there any discussion on nominations? Mr. Christie.
I just wanted to cite some reasons for my nomination of Mary Townsend. Mary has led the School Board and the District through a challenging year with tenacity and grace. She has helped guide a process by which the Board, the Administration, and the Town have become more effective stewards of our District, accomplishing some significant goals along the way. Last spring, Mary led a process which produced a budget that was endorsed by seventy-two percent of Cape voters. Also last spring, Mary led the Board's part in selecting two clear goals for the District: literacy learning and the development of professional learning communities. Under Mary's leadership, the Board confronted the most critical task of any School Board: the selection of a Superintendent. Mary conducted a search which involved all community stakeholders, reached nationwide for candidates, and tapped the expertise of the Administration. Mary invested countless hours into this selection. When necessary, she had the courage to reopen the process. The community owes Mary a deep debt of gratitude for this tireless service, which ultimately produced an excellent fit in Meredith Nadeau. And Cape has already expressed that gratitude. While she ran for reelection unopposed, it is worth noting that Mary received the endorsement of more Cape voters than any other person or referendum on the ballot, a fact which speaks to the public's confidence in her stewardship. Beyond these accomplishments, it is a great pleasure to work with Mary. She is thoughtful, approachable, and respectful. She brings tireless commitment and a warm sense of humor to her work. Mary's expectations for our District are high, for she is ever mindful of the full potential of our students. For all these reasons, I am honored to nominate Mary Townsend for another term as Chair.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor of the nomination of Mary Townsend for Chair of the Cape Elizabeth School Board? Vote is seven-zero. Congratulations, Chairwoman Townsend.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John. That was very kind. I appreciate that. And it's been a pleasure to be on the Board, and it was an honor to chair last year. And I'm looking forward to this year. We have a tremendous Board, and everyone has their own individual strengths that they bring to the table, and hopefully we'll be able to plug those in in the most effective way possible. And so I will continue on with the nominations. Do we have a nomination for Board Vice Chair?
Yes, I move for the, I nominate John Christie as Board Vice Chair.
Do I have a second? Elizabeth? Any further nominations? Discussion?
John was the Board Vice Chair last year, and given the progress we've made, I think it's important that we have continuity in leadership. John was the Finance Chair and also involved with the Negotiations Committee. He's fantastic at listening and providing a calm, long-term perspective on the District, and I think it would be a great opportunity to have John and support Mary in the Board as Vice Chair.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. It'll be a pleasure to serve with you again. I have appointments of committees. These are lumped together. I'd like to suggest that we consider these separately. The first is for Finance Chair. Do I have a nomination for Finance Chair, please? David?
I'd like to nominate Michael Moore to be Chairman, Chairperson of the Finance Committee.
Do I have a second? Do I have any other nominations for Finance Chair? Any discussion?
I did say, and Michael for some information, so I can tell as many nice things about him as everybody else, but he refused to give me very much. I didn't know shyness was allowed on our Board. Anyways, Michael is eminently qualified to be it. He has at least fifteen years' experience in the field of finance and accounting. He's been involved in some extremely complex, in his career, extremely complex financial matters. In his year or so on the Board, he's delved into the budget and budgetary-type issues as well as anybody, and understands it as well as anybody on a various Finance Committee meetings. So I think he has the expertise and the willingness and the deftness which one asks budget questions as well as anybody, so I'm pleased to support his nomination.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Would you like to raise your hand? Okay. Congratulations, Michael, and thank you for serving as Finance Chair. I agree with all that David said. I think you're going to be fabulous. All right, Policy. It's ours' final standing committee. Do I have a nomination for Chair of Policy? Kate?
I would like to nominate John Christie for Policy Committee, Chair of Policy Committee.
Do I have a second? Michael? Any other nominations? All right. So any discussion?
I would like to, the reasons why I'd like to nominate John is, as Michael said, not to repeat what Michael said, but to add, his work, our ethics, are perfect to step into the position of Committee Chair of the Policy Committee. John is diligent, sincere, and kind, and I think those are the perfect qualities in which he will help the Superintendent, the Administration, and our community raise, really directly affect the children's learning and community. Character traits that policy, of what policy committee is the base of, with the backbone. John, you'll be perfect.
Yes, yes, thank you. Any other discussion? I'd just like to set the record straight that the seventy-one percent of the public that voted for the budget had to do with John being Finance Chair, not me being Chair. John did a fabulous job, and he does a fabulous job at everything he does, and I am quite sure he will be a wonderful Chair for Policy, and we have a lot on our plate this year, so support that nomination.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, all those in favor? All right. Seven-zero. Okay, so I'm going to suggest with committee appointments and the Advisory Committee appointments that we look at those as a slate.
And as Chair, you can name the slate and then call for a motion.
I can't hear you.
I said as Chair, you can name the slate and then call for a motion from the Board.
Okay. Would you like me to name each? All right, I'll do that because there are only few. And these are, these will be posted on the web. For committee appointments, we have a slate from the caucus for the Cape Elizabeth Education Foundation, Michael Moore, the Health Insurance Task Force, David Hillman and Michael Moore, Main School Management Association Delegate David Hillman, past General Advisory Board, Kate Williams Hewitt, Technology Steering Committee, John Christie, Transportation and Appeals Committee, Kate Williams Hewitt. Advisory Committee, committees are as follows: Buildings and Grounds, Kate Williams Hewitt; Legislative Liaison, David Hillman; Positive Action Committee, Kate Williams Hewitt; Co-Curricular Steering Committee, Elizabeth Seifreys; Athletic Steering Committee, Joanna Morrissey. Do I have a motion to accept this slate?
Mary? Could I add, I think we have to vote on the appointment of two members to the Policy Committee. Joanna Morrissey.
Thank you. Thank you. So we will add those to the slate? Is that okay? All right. So do I have a motion?
I move that we appoint to the committees the individuals listed by Mary with the addition of Joanna Morrissey and Elizabeth.
Seifreys.
Seifreys, to the Policy Committee as listed by Mary.
Second. Okay. Any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes.
It's just a technical question, but I'm a committee of one in two instances. Is that possible? Or is that a sign of my inability to get along with every guy? Not only that, is I don't understand how I'm a delegate for Main School.
I would pose a testimony to your ability to do the work of an entire committee, David.
Oh, that's kind of you, but, I mean, technically, they're not committees. Legislative Liaison is not a committee, and School Delegate's not a committee, but it's okay with me. I had to ask.
I would just like to say that in the caucus, I think we worked very hard to find committees for everyone's strengths, and I feel very confident with this Board, with the placement that we have of people on committees, including David's two one-man committees. So any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. So that ends the voting portion of our, of our meeting, and we'll move on to item number two, adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments? David?
I wanted to raise an issue, and I guess it would be considered an adjustment to our agenda, and then suggest that maybe we appoint some people to look into it. And the issue is whether or not we should have, the School Board should have iPads in order to connect us to the school. There's at least two reasons for it. Since I'm adding this to the agenda, I don't think it needs to be approved, but one reason is that, you know, South Portland does it and has found that the cost savings is three or four times the cost of the, in the first year than the cost of the iPads. And secondly, talking briefly with Gary Illinois, he gave me a perfect example of why it's highly efficient to do it. Whatever documents we have here, the only we have on are iPads. We can make comments and questions and answers to questions right on the iPad, and it's stored on the cloud, so we never have to worry about note-taking and losing our notes. So there is, and I'm sure he'd come up with fifteen more reasons why we should have it. So I guess as an agenda item, I would like to suggest that we maybe have Meredith take a look at it and present it at a future Board meeting, the pluses and minuses of us having that purchase for, iPads purchase for the School Board.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, we will move this to a future agenda?
I wanted to raise it as an agenda item now that we will, I guess it's an agenda item two. The item is to open an investigation by Meredith into the viability and feasibility of us having an iPad.
All right. So we, I think it makes sense for us to discuss it at our next Agenda Planning meeting then, which will be the end of this month, and I'll get back to you about that. Thank you for bringing that up, David. I think that's worth looking into. Okay. Any other adjustments or agenda items? Okay. We'll move on to number three, approval of School Board minutes from the regular meeting Tuesday, November eighth, two thousand and eleven. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the School Board minutes from the regular meeting on Tuesday, November eighth, two thousand and eleven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, seven-zero. All right, we will move on now to item number four, comments from our student reps. Who do we have? See some coming forward right now in the middle school? All right.
Hi, my name's Gabby Raymond.
And I'm Hans Cruff.
In the upcoming weeks, winter vacation starts on the twenty-third, meaning we go to, we go to a full day of school on the twenty-second, and we get back from vacation on January third.
Also, girls' basketball registration has already begun and ends on the twenty-third. Swimming and indoor track registration for seventh and eighth graders starts on January ninth, and for sixth graders, February eighth.
January sixteenth is Martin Luther King Junior Day, and the variety show for the middle school is on January eleventh. The theme of the month is substance abuse. We are having assemblies for the seventh and eighth grade. We've already had one assembly. Neil McConan came and talked to the two grades last Friday. On January ninth, Matt Braun is coming to talk to the seventh and eighth graders about the results of substance abuse. He was a former Cape preschool student.
Also, on January thirteenth, we're having brothers that juggle come to our school. They will be talking to grades five through eight about making healthy choices. That night at seven, they will be performing a longer and different act than the one done at the school that, that day. They will be, they welcome anyone in Cape to come, and it costs five dollars.
Recently, recently, we had the second dance to get, to get in. We did a fundraiser. You could bring in books or could bring in winter clothes, such as winter jackets, boots, or snow pants. We made back all the money that it cost to have the dance, and we got lots of items to donate to the less fortunate students at the Reiki School. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. All right, high school. Here we have.
So the winter sports season has begun. The National Honor Society is selling candy cane gramps. The Haiti Club is collecting shoes. The Wellness Committee put on the Chef of the Month event just today, actually. We had flatbreads, pizza, come and serve us lunch, which was delicious. The Environmental Club began CNET training, which means that they will monitor the health of birds on the beach. The Graduation Committee had their first annual Jingle Fest, so a bunch of students and parents got together and went on a walk with Jingle Bells and ate hot chocolate and cookies after. It was very enjoyable. And the Robotics Team won the Southern Maine Tournament and is now going on to the Worlds Tournament. Thank you.
Let's use this one, if I can reach it. Okay. So Sasha said basically everything I was going to say, except for our mock trial team won states against Hampton Academy, and that was really exciting. And now we are moving on to Nationals in New Mexico. So, yeah, that's basically all I had to say.
Thank you, Sasha and Abby. There's a lot going on in the high school right now. Okay, so comments from, we'll move on to number five, comments from the public on agenda items. Are there any comments from the public on items that are on the agenda? No? Okay. Let's move on to number six, recognition. Item A, Fall Athletics. Jeff Thora will present to us.
Hello? Just want to take an opportunity to congratulate all of our fall athletic teams in the middle school and in the high school. Congratulations to our student athletes, our coaching staff, on another outstanding season. It's interesting when I'm doing these reports, they always reflect upon just how impressive our student athletes are at Cape Elizabeth, the things that they do not only on the field but off the field, whether it be student government, the clubs, working, volunteering in the community. And then, on the athletic field, having to, of a school size of about a hundred, a hundred less students than a lot of our other competitors, to be as successful as they, as they are. And for some odd reason, it's whenever a team wants to play, or whenever a team plays Cape Elizabeth, there's, seems like they're always playing their best game. They want that, that victory over Cape Elizabeth. And so they're always bringing a strong performance, and our student athletes always respond to those challenges. So it's, just wanted to congratulate all of our fall athletic teams. This fall, at the high school level, we had a number of individual accomplishments that I did want to recognize. We have twenty-six Conference All-Stars and sixteen senior scholar athletes. And in the high school senior class, I believe there were fifty-two seniors participating in a, in a fall sport, so that was about thirty percent. So that's a pretty impressive number. And then, there's a few extra state and national recognitions that we would like to note as well. I'd like to congratulate Peter Doan on his New England Cross Country qualifying, and Peter finished, he was the twenty-second Maine runner across the finish line, so that was, that was special. Western Maine Conference Golfer of the Year was Reese McFarlane, who's a freshman at Cape Elizabeth. Donald Clark is a semifinalist for the James J. Fitzpatrick Award, and that award goes to the top senior football player in the state. The National Soccer Coaches Association of America recognized Melanie Vangle as a member of the All-New England Team, and the Maine Soccer Coaches Association has a Class, Western Maine Class A All-Star list, which included Tim LaValle, Blake Barrett, Melanie Vangle, and Matty Riker. And then, in addition to that, there's a Western Maine All-State Team, and Tim LaValle and Melanie Vangle were recipients of that award. And then, most recently, Melanie was also selected to the All-State Portland Press Herald and Maine Sunday Telegram All-State Team. And another note, not necessarily a fall item, but we'd really happy for Timmy LaValle, who signed his National Letter of Attent to play lacrosse at Providence College, Division One program, so it's a really special moment for Timmy and his family, and we're really proud of him. Oh, I do have, it's a little late getting this to the agenda, so if you want to, it's just a brief summary, we can take one and pass it on, of some of the team and individual accomplishments.
Any comments, questions for Jeff? I'd just like to thank you again and again and again for all of your work with our student athletes. I think we have a tremendous program, and you're the fulcrum of that, and really appreciate all of your countless, countless hours. So let's move on to Mock Trial. I think we have our Mock Trial captains here, the Muscat Sisters and Katie Page. If you'll introduce yourselves for the camera, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Katie Page.
I'm Claire Muscat.
And I'm Emily Muscat. So I guess I'll start. Just to give a little bit of background, the, we are three out of five captains. Max Aronson and Will McCarthy have also been wonderful captains with us. And for the past three months, basically, we've been working on the same case for Mock Trial. The case, to give you a summary, the Vice President of a paper company was murdered, and this is all, this is all fictional, and the prime suspect is the leader of this environmental group who, and he's, he, it was a she in our case, is the main suspect, because this person had a lot of problems with the paper company's environmental practices. So we all took on different roles. Claire was a witness, Katie and I were both lead attorneys, and we won five trials in order to win the state championship, which is a lot harder than it seems. Each trial, we had to miss a day of school for it, and it took, they take about four hours. They're really, they're long, and they get really competitive. And our last one on, just five days ago, the state championship last Thursday, was really, really intense. And luckily for Katie, Claire, and I, it's our second time with the opportunity to go to Nationals.
So yes, as Abby said, Nationals are in New Mexico, Albuquerque this year, and we went last year, and they're in Phoenix, actually, and it was not only a really incredible learning experience, mock trial-wise, but one of the best weekends of my life, and probably with you, too. Honestly, it was so much fun. I love the Southwest, and I would love to go back as well. So we will be looking for donations from the community. We're gonna, we have a sophomore, Kevin Hare, has already begun the fundraising process. He appointed me the head of the bake sale committee, so I'm very flattered. But we do really, really need funds, and I would love to go to Nationals again and represent Maine in the national competition, and it would be such an honor to do it again, so we would love donations for that.
Yeah, we'd also like to thank our coaches, Mr. Hillman and Mr. Shad, who are present here tonight, also my mom, Ms. Page, and Coach Omira. We'd also like to thank the parents and the community for their support and their future support at Nationals. Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
Before they leave, can I say something?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, get ready, girls.
You didn't think, you didn't think you're going to get, you didn't think you're going to get a pass, did you? They're vastly understating the amount of effort that's involved. This was the first year I got a chance to do it from beginning to end. Last year, I got drafted to do the Nationals. It's the first chance I had to see what an entire season lasts like. It's actually ten trials, because they have to play, present, do one trial whether the prosecution, they have to do the next trial whether the defense. So you have to, the classic case of a lawyer arguing out of both sides of the mouths, they have to do it in two back-to-back trials. It is, it is an enormously time-intensive project. The students act as witnesses, they act as lawyers, they act as timekeepers. Witnesses are just as important as lawyers. The witnesses in the, in the prize trial or the finals, quite frankly, I thought were outstanding. They have to be as good, because they basically have to joust with the lawyer who's cross-examining them. The two coaches, I mean, Jeff and I did do a fair amount of work, but Dick Omira and Mrs. Page put in, I can't even think of the amount of hours they put in a week. It must be twenty, twenty-five, thirty hours a week on this. It is extremely intense. The competition is extremely intense this year because the amount of people, amount of towns competing in it has grown geometrically. And Hampton, the team that they beat, had won it for seven years in a row or something like that, till last year when we beat them, and then we beat them again this year. And I did go to this final, and quite frankly, the first trial was close, the second trial was not. Cape has really become very dominant, and I, and I have to tell you, it's immensely hard work. And what's good about this, unlike some extracurricular, or even, quite frankly, some classrooms, we can teach them all we can. We teach them of the rules, we teach them, help them with what kind of questions to ask, what kind of ways to answer it. But once you get in a trial, anything can happen. People forget things, objects come out of the boot you don't even think about. It's real life, and they have to do critically, critical thinking on their feet. It's probably the best example of real-life learning as we'll get in our school system. And it was a joy to watch the trial held in what's called the Law Court, the Main Supreme Court, known as the Law Court, the poise of a lot of, the whole team in terms of how they ask questions, how they respond to pressure, when judges made absolutely bozo rulings, which happens in real life, how they dealt with it. It was, it was, it was a real pleasure. I really felt that the hours I put in were well worth my time, and I'm sure Jeff feels the same way, and Dick and Mary do, and they put in an enormous amount of work. But quite frankly, as interesting as a few of you can be, it has been, it has been an extreme pleasure to coach you, and I think- extreme pleasure to coach you, and I think this is probably some of the best preparation you're gonna get for life. And you guys have done great, and I hope we do well in the Nationals.
Thank you, David, and thank you for taking your time to coach. And thank you to the whole team. It was, I had the pleasure of sitting through all five hours, and it was absolutely riveting, all five hours, watching these kids perform. I was so proud to be a parent in the audience, and actually, it was packed, the courtroom was, it was a big courtroom, and it was packed full of parents. And some people just came in from, you know, being out in the lobby to watch the kids argue their cases, and so, and Meredith came and joined for a bit. It was absolutely, it made me very proud to be a community member in Cape Elizabeth. So you all did wonderfully, and congratulations, and I, I hope you guys will do well in Nationals and get your funds raised, so keep us posted.
We should mention one of our things, that one of our student reps on here, Abby Donnelly, is a member of the team. Started off the trial with one of the toughest roles, and quite frankly, did a great job. And I think, as Coach Omira said in his comments, set the, between the, her direct examination, and I think what Chelsea did the opening, set the standard by which everybody had to measure up to, and you should be congratulated.
Thank you. Thank you, Abby.
It was Chelsea Why Not, sorry.
All right. So moving on to, if there are no other comments, moving on to Item C, robotics. I'm very excited about this.
Get an exciting demonstration, too.
I know.
Yes, my name is Evan Thayer, I'm the advisor to the robotics team. I have the great pleasure of sneaking into our robotics lab occasionally during the day and seeing what's been built there, and snapping some pictures of some of my interesting creations of students. But thinking that a picture's worth 1,000 words, and a video must be 10,000 or so, and so I'm going with the demonstration being worth about 100,000 words. So I'd like to have a couple of our teams come up and maybe just demonstrate what they've built in front here, if that's okay, so. In fact, I'd like all our team members to come up, but the few we've got that will work for you tonight are Luke DeBorgianak and Anthony Castro, with one of our teams that they'll be going to the world, and you can start your process of coming up if you like. And then also the middle school team, 56D, Mac Brucker and Kyle Long, and Will Corcello, and Matt Hufford are here tonight to demonstrate that. This pair here, or this alliance of teams, it didn't have to be a Cape Alliance at our, at our recent tournament in Southern Maine, but the, Luke and Anthony, being the team that came on top after the morning rounds, chose these guys because they have a very good robot. And at that point, they just did exceedingly well in the elimination rounds.
Now the wheels are falling off, we're in trouble.
It'll light up at about nine o'clock.
Right.
While these guys set up, we also have on this, over on the side, we have Jasper Hansel, and Ian Schrank, and Leah Parish, and Andrew Valent. And the first three of those run a team that won a programming skills award as well. So we did, I think we did the school very proud, and these guys, these guys did themselves proud.
We get to keep these when it's done, don't we? Take them home?
Christmas presents.
While they're setting up, I just, I also had the opportunity to attend the robotics tournament at the University of Southern Maine, and Evan coordinated the Southern Maine tournament itself, so he didn't only coach these teams, but he also took on the job of facilitating the tournament, helping to recruit the volunteers, and we have a number of, well, at least a few volunteers who are here tonight. And the time and effort put into that tournament is extraordinary, but it's also an extraordinary event to watch. And it starts off a little slow, but believe me, when you're sitting in the audience, by the end, you're standing up, because it's so fascinating to watch, and you're just rooting these kids on, because they support each other, they cheer for each other, they encourage each other, and they work together.
As, and go ahead any time, and demonstrate what you do there. So each of these obstacles is worth a point. There's actually four teams that are in a 12-foot-by-12-foot field. And so you're on either the red alliance or a blue alliance, and I'm simplifying somewhat, but you get a point for each of these. The black object is a, is a negation object, so if you see that your opponent has built up a lot of points, you plop the black barrel into their bin, and then you negate all of their points. There's also a doubler, where if you yourself have racked up a lot of points, you can put your doubler in the bin. So there is a lot of strategy in this as well, and it is very exciting to watch. Here again, it's another example, I think, where the theory meets the real world. So you have your best plan, you have your best design. All these guys worked a couple days a week, some Saturdays as well. We have a group of great volunteers from the community, and an engineer that comes in as well. And things go wrong in these competitions as well. So both these teams are also working towards fundraising options, to see that they can go on to the next level of competition. Wow, that's, is it gonna get all negated, is the question? What that, wow!
Making a soccer referee.
Boy, I think when I said that's worth 100,000 words, I think I underestimated that, because that's really a great demonstration. So we'll probably call that, well, why not? We'll take one more minute here, and I'll fill in some of the background as well. So Eric Jensen, one of our community volunteers, is here as well. And as I said before, we have two others. One's a working engineer that comes in and works with the students. So we'll drop three more in there, and then call it. Good. And go for one more if you can. All right. Great, thank you, guys. I'm gonna sneak in a little, a minute towards Legos here as well, so. If I could just take another two minutes and talk about what happens before this as well. I mean, it's great that this is a middle school, this is grade seven through 12, and, you know, I see it every day, and I think you get a sense of the continuum there, and the skill development, grade seven through 12. But it really can begin before that as well. So we have some grades fifth and sixth programs, and I think that a lot of the underpinnings of the mechanics can begin, you know, right with building structures like this. And some of those robots are just vexed versions of the Legos here. And then if you step back a little bit, here's something that I think in elementary school could be done. And this is one of my favorites, because basically, this four-bar linkage, as we talk about mechanically, it's a parallelogram in motion. And so we can study the fact that we've got this quadrilateral with opposite sides congruent, creates a parallelogram. But what that does in the robotics world is it keeps this arm perfectly perpendicular to the floor, which might be very useful if you're picking up, say, a bucket of water or something like that. You'd much rather pick it up parallel versus, versus dumping it out. But this is a parallelogram in motion, I love this one. But this can start in elementary school, and then it goes here, and then it goes here. So it truly is a, in my mind, it's a K-12 continuum of skills. But you got to see these guys tonight, and I appreciate your having us in for a few minutes.
Can I just make one other comment? Mr. Thayer has also recently received a CF grant, correct? Do you want to mention that? Because I noticed that Leah was our lone female representative here this evening, and robots are not just for boys.
Yes, thank you, and I would agree with that. And so through a CF grant and working with PCPA, the next step is try to actively pursue getting more girls involved in robotics. So we have a board game that's been developed, and the idea there is, at the earliest of grades, I think enthusiastic, inspired parents even, can work with their young kids at home to build things like this. I get emails from parents that enjoy working with their kids building these things. And I think, you know, even at that level, you create an enthusiasm and an interest. There is some, there is a girls-only component to this, and in my experience, I'm seeing that, and this is a broad brush stroke, but I think girls can develop perhaps a little differently than boys, and that girls-only environment might help in the confidence of some of the early skills. And then when you bring the two groups together, boys and girls, at that sixth-grade level, then everyone's can contribute to the team to build something in a, in a team atmosphere. So we're just starting that process right now, but I think we'll, I think we'll make progress on that. Thank you for your time.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Evan, for all of your work, and thank you to the kids and the parents who support them. This was fascinating, really interesting, and now I want to go to meet, but I don't know, do you guys need chaperones in Anaheim?
Volunteer earlier.
California.
Can we make some noise while we're going here?
Should we take a quick break, so you can?
Yes.
How much noise? It's loud. We better take a quick, how long will it take?
Well, I was amazed at what they did today, so, about five minutes or less.
Five minutes? Okay, let's take, let's take a five-minute recess then. Our robotics team has moved their equipment out, and we are ready to proceed with the rest of our meeting. Item number seven, we've moved on to communications, and we will hear from Chelsea Why Not, a high school student who is on the State Board of Education. Hello, Chelsea.
Hi.
How are you? Thank you for joining us and telling us a little bit about your role and how you were chosen, and I appreciate you taking the evening. And Chelsea was also a key player in mock trial.
Again, my name is Chelsea Why Not, I'm a junior. I am on the State Board of Education, and I was telling Ms. Townsend about it the other day, and she thought it'd just be an interesting thing for me to share with you, so it's my story. When I was sophomore, I think in like November maybe of my sophomore year, Ms. Lapointe, the guidance counselor at the high school, gave me an application to be a student member on the main State Board of Education. And every year, a new student member is picked, so you're picked, and you start your junior year, and you do a two-year term. And so they pick one from each district, and they trade off each year. So she gave me the application, and she said, "I don't expect you to fill this out, like you don't have to, I just wanted to give it to you." And I got home, and I was looking through it, and I realized why she didn't expect me to fill it out. It was like, long, and it was very intense. There was essays and recommendations. Mr. Shed had to sign something, Mrs. Snell had to sign something. And so I did it anyways, and I handed it in, and then in early January, a couple months later, I heard back that I was one of six finalists, that they wanted me to come to Augusta for an interview. So I got all dressed up in my mock trial suit and everything, and I, and I went up there with my dad, and I, I'm, I have to tell you this, this isn't really related, but when I got there, I, I walked up to the place, and I, I really thought that this interview was just gonna be between me and this girl who had been emailing me about it, just us two. And I walk up, and there's this girl sitting in the waiting room with her mom, who's waiting to go into her interview. She got called in, and she was in there for like 25, 30 minutes, and she comes out, and she was hysterically crying, and I'm just, oh, God.
that.
You won't get anywhere.
You won't. Yeah.
That's great. That is wonderful, Chelsea. Any comments or questions for Chelsea? It's amazing. We have, I mean, one of two students to represent, I mean, she's the only student in our district chosen to represent students, and it's a huge, huge honor. And I can't think of a better person to do it than you. I have to say, when we brought Meredith in to do the tour, we asked Jeff for a heavy-hitter student to show her around, and he chose Chelsea. And she wasn't feeling well, but still, she was absolutely, on her worst day, better than I would be on my best day.
She took me backstage at the theater, I just want to point out, which won my heart.
Oh, yes. I remember that. So, what an honor, and I would be happy to meet with you and talk with you at any point about the work you're doing, and if anyone would like to, you know, speak with Chelsea about upcoming issues, we'd love to send those up to the Education Commission with you.
That would be great.
So, thank you. Thanks for taking this evening and present to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
We have some Pond Cove staff here to talk about the Daily Five literacy work that they've been doing, and we thank them because we know they're 12 hours into their day, and then some at this point. So, thank you for being patient.
And if you could introduce yourselves, that would be...
Absolutely. Well, first of all, thank you very much for allowing us to come this evening and speak with all of you. I'm Heather Geiki. I teach fourth grade.
Julie Nicholson, first grade.
Karen Abbott, first grade.
Amy Karen, first grade. And we're just going to set up a little slideshow here for you. So, we're very excited to talk about the Daily Five and the Cafe with you this evening. How it all started was actually through my eight-year-old son here with me this evening. He was in a first, second-grade multi-age program in Wells, and I was teaching at the school at the time, and I went in and observed this teacher, actually both of these teachers, and they were using the Daily Five in their classroom, and I was so impressed with what I saw. It really fosters a lot of independence amongst the students, and it allows the teacher to work independently with their students. So, I was new to Pond Cove last year, and I implemented the program in my classroom, and was asked to share the Daily Five and Cafe strategies with the different teams. So, I put together a PowerPoint and presented to the teens, kind of, from what I was told, kind of whet the appetite. And a majority of the teachers in the school are now using the program, so we're very excited about that. We had 12 teachers attend a conference last summer, six of which were paid by a SIF grant and the other six through the district. And, did you...
Not with me. So, we were lucky enough to be part of those 12 that went to Massachusetts on a hot, sticky summer day to go and listen to the Two Sisters who had developed the framework, and they called themselves the Two Sisters. They are sisters. They live in Seattle, right? I think. And the nice thing about learning from them is that they are actually still working with children. They're in the classroom, even though they've got this big, publicized framework and system that they've developed, and they're still very current, and they have a website up to date, so we're constantly getting new ideas that have been tweaked, and ways that we can tweak it in our classrooms to make it suit us even better. We came back inspired and energized from the conference, I think, where we were kind of bop, 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 all the way home of how we were going to make this work in our classrooms. So, the framework gives us more flexibility in our teaching of literacy in our classrooms. And previously, with the structure of guided reading, we felt like we were under pressure to kind of get through a certain number of groups in the day, and we were just kind of treadmilling through. And this allows us to meet with individuals, with pairs, with groups, and be really flexible with, it might be a low reader with a high reader, but we're really focusing on the skills based on what the need is, using our assessments that we've, have newly been developed, and the observations that we're looking at on a daily basis, which is also allowing us to catch concerns much sooner too, because we're really able to connect with individuals. And the structure of the Daily Five means that we can spend more focused time instructing and less time kind of managing behaviors, you know? Sit down, do this, you should be doing that, what, and that, what. We're really now, it's, we're crazy proud, Amy's phrase at the end, sorry, but we're crazy proud of how this really looks in our classrooms. And children are independent and working purposefully for extended periods of time, and we're working at the first-grade level, and I'm amazed at how quickly children are reading and engaged and enjoying their learning. They have more ownership. The goals are clear. The children know what they're working on, and they have a power of choice within their day, although it's a controlled choice, it's still choice as far as they're concerned. And so, the Daily Five has been a framework that has built independence, so that we can really teach individuals in small groups.
And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block.
Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights.
And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block.
Hopefully, it's not too loud.
to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights.
Hopefully, it's not too loud.
And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights.
Hopefully, it's not too loud.
And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose to do during the literacy block. Do we have, hopefully you'll be able to see this, but if we need to turn off lights. Hopefully, it's not too loud. And what the Daily Five consists of is, there are five tasks that the students can choose It's extremely important and ties right into guided reading that we do. Does it look right? Does it sound right? And then does it make sense? So that you can see them sometimes, some children will actually use that manipulative, just moving their bodies to remember what the skill is. Here's another one, I love that one too. Know the words by heart. He's got quite a few or she. Here's another, just some other examples.
So I'm the closer of the group tonight. And I actually just wanted to start by saying when we got an email that asked if we were, any of, any of the Poncove teachers were interested in talking about the daily five, the four of us were like, woo! Because it's just been a very, very exciting process. It's thrilling and it's, it's changed everything. We think it's even changed sort of the, the social climate at Poncove because it, because it's such an explicit way of teaching. And what was very important to us when we heard about this and we started learning this summer was that it wasn't a brand-new curriculum because we feel really solid about our curriculum. We've improved it over the years and stuff like that. And you know, as soon as we heard daily five, we were like, oh, what new stuff now? Like I just perfected all the other stuff. And, um, but to find out that it was more of a framework for the great curriculum we already have and a way to get the kids to be independent and a way to, as Julie said, not micromanage the classroom as they're working on their reading. And we, it sets the kids up to do really authentic reading and writing independently, not just busy work, but they're, they're doing authentic things by themselves so that we can work one-on-one with a student. If we found out that they need help on rhyming, we may even have a small group on rhyming. I mean, it can even tell me, like the assessments can tell me that most of my class knows how to rhyme so that I don't have to do a whole class session on rhyming. I have three kids that I need to pull over and meet with about rhyming. So, um, and, okay, all right, we're gonna try to focus here so we can finish up. Sorry. So let's see. We love it because of that one-on-one conferencing. We love it because it changed our reading groups quite a bit from, from being a group of kids all at the same reading level to being a group of kids at mixed ability levels, working on the same strategy. So in turn, you could have like a child reading a level four and you could have a child reading a level 20, meeting in the same reading group because they're all working on maybe stretch and blend, putting words back together or using a chunk, which, I'm sorry about the chunk thing. So it, you know, we could mix it, we call it, I'm not even sure how to say it, but we, it's either heterogeneous or heterogeneous grouping. So it's, that was kind of exciting because the kids can't really figure out who's in what reading group. You know what I mean? Like they haven't really figured out which one's the high group and which, because there is no high group, that sort of thing. So it has just changed all of our conversations at Poncove School. It's changed, what's funny is it's changed the teacher conversations, but it's also changed the kid conversations. And they, the way that they talk now is like little grownups. You know, they just can speak exactly the way that we taught, you know, exactly the strategy. Like, oh, I was using the chunking strategy. And so, you know, and it's, it's just, we were crazy proud of it, like we said. And we were hoping to extend an invitation for you guys to come over anytime and see it because it's actually almost a full day of literacy. So that anytime to stop by and see, Meredith came by my classroom and got to see some, got to see some daily five.
I got to be read too.
Yeah, yeah. So it's pretty, we would love to have you come over and take a look at it because we love it.
But not until after vacation, we'd appreciate it.
That's it, we're just very, very excited.
I hope one last.
One last?
One last.
Oh yeah, sorry. We have a little...
We have one more.
We wanted to ask the kids what they thought about the daily five. So this last part is starring the children.
What I like about the cafe menu is that whenever we're like reading with a buddy or just reading by yourself and you feel like you stumbled on something, you can look up at the menu and you can say like, oh, I remembered, I have to read with expression or something and to make it sound more fluent, like you're actually reading to someone.
My favorite is read to someone because I get to read to my friends.
My favorite is writing because you get to write over and over again.
My favorite is listening because if you don't know how to read a book, you can still listen to it in a drive.
I probably like writing was at daily five because it just gives me a chance to just write a really fun story and it gives, it lets me be creative.
Writing. And you can write stories that you have done.
My favorite is word work because you make words and you can be like a better writer.
My favorite is read to someone because you can read to your friends.
My favorite is writing because you get to write really cool things that happened to you before.
What I like about daily five is you can pick a lot of stuff instead of like, you have to do this, you have to do that. That's what I like.
So we'd, we'd love to come back then. Oh, 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 I was also supposed to mention that, that as well as CF funding half of the, six out of the 12 teachers to go do the summer conference, CF also funded, as, as you saw, Listen to Reading. I wanted to give them a shout out because they funded iPods for the classroom, for books on tape for the kids. So that's, that we tried to put that in there and show that because that's been changed everything. So, that's cool.
Any comments or questions for our team?
I just want to thank you all for coming in. We talked a lot on the school board about the literacy goal in the, in the district. And it's, that, that talk at the board level can be rather dry. And it's wonderful to see that your enthusiasm and to see, you know, this, this view into the work that you're doing in the classroom and, and, you know, for us to have a little chance to experience the classroom is really, is really wonderful. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Shall we call first or...
Meredith doesn't. She stays for a while.
Call me and I'll...
We'll get a call from Meredith, we can show up.
I know, well, thank you so much.
It's really, I mean, you really, oftentimes I'm closest to Tom's office, which in a way, you know, has been good and bad. It's, you know, I just, I often hop down there and I'm like, you have to come see this. It's insane. What is, it's like, I feel like I'm teaching like 12th grade because they're so independent and they're all busy and I don't even want to interrupt them, they're so busy.
That's great.
I just wanted to say something else too. And all the work we've done with Tammy and Claire kind of works just flows really well into this. And we've been totally energized by their, the work that they've come in. I don't know if you've had any chance to be with them, but they're like coming in with this great hurricane of ideas and we're like sucking it up and one more all the time. And if they were able to model lessons within this framework and show us how all of that work with them ties into all of this too.
And that was also a CF here, I think, too, with Tammy and Claire.
Thank you, CF.
They're only one lucky group.
Yes, now, well, thank you so much for putting this together and coming and speaking with us tonight. It was a great presentation and I can't say any more than John said. So thank you very much. Okay, so under communications, we have item C athletics department. Yes.
Leave it your packet. There was a participation spreadsheet and an athletic injury spreadsheet in there. So it's pretty self-explanatory, but I'll keep it, I'll keep it brief. Athletic numbers this fall, both in the high school and middle school, were right on par. Pretty much where they were last year. Down slightly, about 20 students in the high school from this fall to last fall. Middle school is right on par. And so that's, that's good news, I think, in this, in this economy. And given participation fees and what's happening nationwide, that number's decreasing. So the CRs being, staying steady is really reassuring. So glad to see that. And I'll, I've done this each, after each season, I'll provide spreadsheet report for, after each season with all the numbers. And the athletic injuries, I think it's been, first I'd like to thank the school board for all of their support for the athletic trainer position. I think it's a true benefit to our, our student athletes, our athletic program, having that person that can assess, be basically the first responder when there's an injury. And Lisa does a tremendous job. She's built an incredible relationship with the students. And she's not only assessing and managing, she's rehabilitating, she's educating, she's doing some strength and conditioning type stuff with our students and our teams. So I'm really fortunate and very thankful to have that support for an athletic trainer. And basically some of the totals there, treatment totals, that could be, so when you look at upper extremities, lower extremities, those numbers, if you add them all up and then you look at your treatment totals, you're like, whoa, that doesn't, that doesn't add up. But treatment totals would be everything from doing some rehab. Whenever a student comes into her office, she documents that information. So that's why that number looks a little different. Then it could be something like a blister as well. So that was, that's two of the reports that I had put in there. And one thing I would like to do, we would like to say is on behalf of the students, thank, there are a few people that I would like to thank. There are 350 athletic events in the fall. And at some point, there's a town service or a school program or a resident of this community or business that has an impact on our students. And it could be anything from public works to our fire and rescue and our police department, the work that they do with community services, the facilities and maintenance people, our faculty and staff, our administration, the coaching staff, our athletic boosters, our parents, our local businesses, the citizens and residents of the community. I mean, it is a community event. Athletics in this town, I think that's what separates our athletic program from a lot of, a lot of other athletic programs is that community support. And it's, it makes for, makes my job a lot easier and we're very grateful. I know the students are very grateful for that. It's a really, really nice thing.
Any questions? Yes.
I had a couple of questions, Jeff. First of all, I don't, I want to compliment you on the great job that you do. I don't know how many people go to athletic events. I go to a lot. I'm also at the school sometimes early, sometimes late. I've never been there before, Jeff has been there. I never left and I didn't see his truck, the park lot. Especially on weekends. I don't know how you, you do all that you do, Jeff. I think you do too much, but God bless you. This athletic program will not sit without Jeff. He does everything. You're gonna see him on a Saturday or a Sunday or a Friday or whatever. It's absolutely amazing. So I do want to thank you, Jeff, for the job that you do. I, I know a lot about it, I see it and I'm constantly amazed. Your, your wife probably doesn't know your first name anymore.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I probably should have added my wife to that list.
I thank her every time I see her.
Probably should have put her at the top.
Yes.
I did notice something in the numbers of injuries. And it may have to do with the fact that it seems in the last three years, the number of treatment totals has gone up dramatically in the fall. And it also seems that the number of concussions has gone up dramatically in the last, since '08, '09 to present. And I'm just noticing those trends in your numbers.
I think on the treatment totals, one of the pieces that has been, we've tried to increase the athletic trainers' hours. And last budget season, there was a significant increase and to where that should be.
Full-time and therefore there's more?
I think her total hours now are basically reflective of the time that she's been putting in and the funding for that position. But on the concussion side, I think a lot has to do with the education and the steps that the, the school board and the, and the administration and the school nurse, athletic trainers put in to provide awareness and a protocol for treating concussions.
In other words, it isn't that, it's almost like, I can think of a good metaphor, example, but it's, it's, they've always been there, it's just that we're catching it more.
Exactly. Yeah, I would, I agree with that 100%. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Item D, special education staffing. Yeah, Jane, are you going to be... We have Jane Golding, who is the director of instructional support services here in Cape Elizabeth.
Good evening. You all received a memo and so I'm really here just to answer your questions.
Do you mind giving a...
Tell me the overview? Okay. During the school year, we've had three educational technicians resign. Two have achieved teaching jobs in other districts, so we're very proud of them. And one moved out of state. We've left those positions open and looked again at how we are staffing each school and have done some shifting around. And so continue to have those three positions open. And would like to roll that three-position money into a teacher position for the remainder of the school year. That person would serve kindergarten through sixth grade, specifically focusing on literacy instruction for young people with special education needs, as well as being able to do some interventions in classrooms for young people who may be in the pre-referral stage.
Thank you, Jane. Questions? John, did you...
I have, I just have one. I think Meredith explained to me in the planning session how this, how the, how the teacher, the single teacher would be able to provide the services that are now being provided by three ed techs. But I'd love it if you explained it again. Maybe I would underst... Better recall it or, or maybe I would, and I think it's worth public understanding.
I would like to understand, I think it's worthwhile for the public to understand as well.
Okay. So actually, there was one ed tech position at each school that was vacated. So we looked, we began by looking at the elementary school and the positioning of our educational technicians and the children they were serving and realized that with some adjustment, we could continue to serve the children very well and didn't fill the position. We then looked at the middle school position, which had been vacant since the day before school. Looked again at the young people and the students were actually doing really well and didn't need as much support as we had anticipated. So we didn't fill the position. The high school position was vacated again the day before school started. And we filled that with a sub for quite some time. What we've been able to do is to look at our educational technicians at the middle school, make some adjustments in assignments and move one person from the middle school to the high school to fill that position. Those young people at the high school did indeed need that continued service of an educational technician. At this point, we feel like we really need the services of an educator, a teacher, who is certified, who can work beside and with classroom teachers and directly serve young people in teaching. So that's how we've moved things around.
We, we won't have any students then who are receiving services now who, who won't be able to receive services because we're, because we're reducing the number of, the total number of positions?
No.
Because...
Everyone is served. This has taken months, this has taken actually since before school started, for us to be sure that everyone is served.
Okay, thank you.
David.
Again, I, it's hard to follow, maybe it's the time of night or whatever, the memo. So I want to make sure I understand your oral explanation. We lost three ed techs, one in each school.
Correct.
We replaced them with a teacher at one school, which is the primary, excuse me, elementary school. Middle school's taken care of because we didn't need... Middle school's taken care of because we didn't need, it turns out, we didn't need as many ed techs as we thought we did.
Correct.
We're actually shifting one of those ed techs to the high school to fill the high school's need.
Yes.
So that's, so the net effect is, okay, then you have the additional comment at the end, which I do understand, the first three bullet points, the last bullet point, I understand, the elimination of the private tutor who is not a certified special educator. So is there, in addition to this, we're eliminating another position?
Well, there was a carryover from last year. A private tutor was hired to work one-to-one with some students in the elementary school, and that contracted service has been continued this year as schools started. However, this person is serving young people who have IEPs, and she is not a certified special educator. So my goal is that children with IEPs are served by certified special educators.
So continuing my summary, we have three ed techs that are gone, we're shifting one from the middle school to the high school, we don't have, and that's available because of lack of need in middle school, we're eliminating a private tutor at, apparently it was primarily at Poncove?
She currently is serving two or three young people at the middle school, is ready to dismiss them because they've done so well. So that just leaves us with a couple at the elementary school, and this special educator would indeed be able to serve those young people.
Okay.
That's a contracted service, it's not an employee of ours, the tutor.
All right, okay, I'm just trying to follow the adds and subtracts here.
Do you have a specific question, David?
Well, yes. I, she's answering it as I'm asking it. She didn't mention the elimination of a special tutor. Now, since I see it on there, she's now explaining it. So the numbers weren't adding up. Elimination of three, adding of one, doesn't add up. So now I'm finding out how it adds up. Okay?
Oh yeah, sure.
All right. I think I've now got it all to add up.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kate?
Assuming the special one-on-one tutor that one of the kids got in from the program in the middle school, if there is a difference there, we will look again. If there's, if there's, if there's a fact that it continues not to make progress, we need to get the one-on-one.
We'll relook at how to serve them best. We actually have an amazing program in place for one of them right now. One of the middle school special educators has done a great job in putting together materials and a support system for this particular student. And the tutor actually was quite amazed at what she saw, so I think we'll be fine.
And then the same with the elementary, the special ed teacher will serve one-on-one. I understand where, of course, we want a special ed, certified teacher in our classroom and not a, a special, but the specialized tutor, the specialized, was specialized in reading program. So I'm assuming, does that, I'm assuming she was, those students were making progress?
They are.
And once that tutor's taken away, making progress, is the main goal, we think this, does the special ed teacher that always have the exact, it was that one last one, like the one-on-one consultant who's using, do you agree?
Absolutely. And the reality is that it will depend on who we are able to hire.
Exactly.
Absolutely. We don't remove services before we have what we need.
Exactly, so we're removing those specific certifications, or those.
We're looking for someone to be able to serve those young people as well as they are being served currently.
One more question. I meant to summarize, I, I did actually have a question as well as directions. Is, what's, there's a lot of people moving around, I didn't ask about the substitute. I assume, I think you said there was a substitute covering in the high school?
There was.
Will there still be after the hiring of this person?
No, the substitute has left.
Okay. What's the net effect of all this on our budget? By adding this person, eliminating these positions, shifting, is the net effect a positive, negative, or neutral?
Well, it will depend on the level of teacher we hire, but three educational technicians' salaries are very comfortable to hire a teacher.
Okay. So you're confident that we're, we're not going to, you're comfortable, I'll put it this way, that we should not see an unexpected demand on our budget?
Not with this, no. I'm vigilant of the budget, have been since I arrived.
Well, that's nice to know.
I would just add that special education staffing is something we'll be talking about at the January workshop, so certainly if you have other questions that you don't have answered tonight, please, we'll, we'll ask for that input prior to the, or Michael will likely be asking for that input as the new finance chair prior to the January workshop meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Thanks for waiting.
Moving on now to the superintendent's report.
John, are we violating any labor laws by those 100 employees we have out there?
I asked if they would mind, so.
I, I have to say, I don't know what, what you're doing or what you're probably doing, unbelievably well behaved. Missed a compliment.
I think they're modeling for us, David.
You want, one? For us, David, or for David?
I missed it. So I've just handed out, hopefully, a somewhat visual representation of the vision and the process of updating the vision, mission, and values of the Cape Elizabeth School District. And it's been several years since the district has gone back to look at those during the interview process and during my sort of entry into the district during the last several months. It's a theme that has come up a lot. It seems to be a juncture at which this would be a useful exercise. So I have just kind of laid out a little bit of a visual framework, and I'm sorry because I left my computer upstairs and thought I could plug in my laptop, but the graphic didn't translate, so I'm just going to talk about it. But basically, it, this graphic, which we'll post on the website, includes sort of the definition of what a, what a vision is, which is basically, what is, what would success look like? The mission, which is the district's role and responsibility for achieving that vision, and what are the values, the beliefs that we of a district have that will help us translate into best practice. And so this process will kind of unfold in the coming months, and we'll be seeking input from a wide range of stakeholders. So the way I've kind of mapped this is that we kind of start with our current vision, mission, and values, and we'll be asking the leadership team, the teachers and district staff to weigh in on those, take them through some exercises to look at that, and think about where do we want to be. We'll use that information to inform the process with the wider community, so to have the conversations with students, with parents, with citizens of Cape Elizabeth, with business owners, with town representatives. Let's hear where they want to be, as informed by the process that has taken place with staff. Feed that back to the district staff, the teachers, and the leadership team to create a renewed vision, mission, and values, which will then be presented to the school board for adoption. So it's a rather simplistic representation, but I think it's the best way to sort of illustrate the work that lies before us. Again, I anticipate this process kind of unfolding, and actually, some of that work will start tomorrow, some of it will continue into next week with some conversation with our faculty K-12. And I anticipate this being kind of finalized in time for the March business meeting. With any luck, it will happen a little earlier than that, but it is winter in New England, even though you wouldn't know that to have stepped outside today. You know, I put a little side note that there's really no budget for this project, which is fine. You know, I kind of knew this, this work was out there, but I will be seeking volunteer support to kind of augment the district's resources. So if you have expertise in publicity or public relations, or don't mind making phone calls to gather some donations for expenses like refreshments, if you have expertise in compiling data and doing data entry or wordsmithing and editing, please contact the superintendent's office. And, you know, I will be happy to have a conversation with you and see how we can put your skills and talents to work. But this is really an exciting opportunity for the district. I think it's an important time for us to think about who we are as a K-12 district or as a pre-K-2 lifelong learning district, as we think about our work with the community services department. And so it's an exciting piece for me, it's the beginning. It informs the work that comes after that, it leads us into goal-setting and tie, laying out the timelines for some of our goals and the specific pieces that we want to measure. So I'm, I'm very much looking forward to that process. Questions on this piece? Because I have lots more to talk about. Looking forward to it. Mindful of time, I'll just try to zip through the rest of this. I was reminded, listening tonight, to all that's going on of my work in a crazy, chaotic summer theater environment, where the slogan was, "Where so much is happening, we can hardly keep track." That's how it felt at this meeting tonight. And I think that that's the truth about the work of a school district. There's a lot going on all the time, in every classroom, in every school, in every building, in every department, and they're exciting places to work. In late November, we held a meeting with our new staff from across the district, so teachers who are new to the Cape Elizabeth School District, maybe they're brand-new teachers, maybe they've moved from another district, or in some cases, they are teachers who have changed schools or changed roles within our district. And it was just, again, a great K-12 opportunity for people to come together and have conversation about things that are going well, what are some surprises, how can we support you? And thanks to Steve and John, who are able to represent the administrative team there with me at that meeting. We also had a K-12 teacher leader meeting, dine and discuss format, and since Jeff thanked his wife, I will thank my husband for cooking lasagna for, for the 40 people who came out that night. We had a Massachusetts principal, who is a former colleague of Jane Golding's, her name is Catherine Glaude, and she's published a lot of work around professional learning communities. And so Catherine came at no cost to the district, bless her, we thank her again, and spent some time talking with our teachers and facilitating some work, walking us through the process of some protocols and professional learning community work. And we will have another of those events in February. I also held a coffee chat on November 16th, and there are a couple of people here tonight who turned out for that meeting. There are only a handful of people who came, but we will not be deterred, and I will be hosting another coffee chat January 21st, 2012. Let's see. The middle school, recycling is a recurring theme around here, and I just want to point out that the middle school, the sixth grade, is part of a zero-waste challenge by the Chonki. Camp Chonki is the outdoor experience that the sixth grade participates in, so their goal is to try to have no trash and to do their absolute best. So they're, but they're also, the homerooms in sixth grade are collecting some information, interviewing people in the district, and plan to produce some sort of final product that will help inform the rest of us about the work that we can do in the area of recycling and being good stewards of our resources. Middle school's also in the midst of the winter fitness challenge. I have not logged in. I'm sorry, Mr. Schout, but I will take care of that soon. And Chelsea Wyatt was here earlier, the main department of education is also in the midst of the No Child Left Behind waiver process. So we have sent out information to our faculty, asking them to participate in the survey that's posted online. Please help inform the process, and that's not open only to school district employees, but there's more information about that posted on the main department of education website. The town adopted their budget calendar last night, so we will bring forth to you at the January board meeting a draft calendar for budget. I'm pleased to say that the new community services brochure is available online. It has not yet been mailed out to homes, but it is coming, and registration begins New Year's Day at 8:00 PM, New Year's evening, I guess, at 8:00 PM. And tomorrow evening, 6:30, you can watch Mr. Connolly lead the middle school faculty team in competition against the Harlem, and it's not the Globetrotters, it's a.
The.
The Harlem Superstars, who are former Harlem Globetrotters, who travel as a, as a group. That game will take place at 6:30 tomorrow night at the high school gym.
Is that all?
There are a few other things on here, but I will stop.
Thank you, Meredith. You're right, there's a lot, a lot going on, and I'm mindful of the time as well, so we will move along to new business. Item A, consideration to approve the Nordic Ski Team trip to Sugarloaf Outdoor Center, Carabasut Valley, Maine, December 28th through 30th, 2011. Do I have a motion, please?
I have a motion to approve the Nordic Ski Team trip to the Sugarloaf Outdoor Center in Carabasut Valley, Maine, on December 28th through the 30th, 2011.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor? Item B, consideration to approve Cape Elizabeth PAS Part I budget costs for 2012, 2015 in the amount of $56,002.91. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move for the approval of Cape Elizabeth PAS Part I budget costs for the 2012, 2013 budget year in the amount of $56,002.91.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? Meredith, do you have anything to?
I can briefly just explain that the PAS budget, PAS is the Portland Area Technical High School, and the PAS budget formula is set by agreement with the member districts, and that agreement calls for the tuition to be set based on the prior two-years enrollment of students from Cape Elizabeth in the PAS program. So from last year's two-year period to this year's two-year period, we're looking at an increase of, it's one and a half students, which equates to about $10,000.
Questions, concerns? All right. All those in favor? Okay, item C, we have consideration of the following policies for second reading. Were you going to read the policies, or Meredith, were you?
I can cite the policies that are available here for second reading.
Okay.
We have, we have three policies for second reading tonight. We're going to go through, I guess we'll go through each one of them individually. The first is JRAE, which is the Annual Notice of Student Education Records and Information Rights.
Do you want to, the way it's been done in the past, I think, is, at times Kathy will present these as a slate for nomination or for approval. She'll, she'll do a motion that contains all of the policies. I don't know if you want to do it that way?
Sure.
Or if you want to do each policy?
Sure, we can do it that way, then we can discuss. If, if there's any discussion, we can discuss individual policies.
Okay.
So, so in that case, I would move to approve the following policies, JRA, JRA-E, GBEBB, Staff Conduct with Students, and JJIAB, private school students' access to public school co-curricular interschool attic and extracurricular activities.
John, is the motion to approve these, or they're just a consideration for a second reading? And if we're not voting to approve these, it's just a?
Second reading is generally considered adoption.
It's approved.
So it should be to adopt.
Okay.
I assume in that motion you.
Have a second, Meredith?
Yes, may I have a second, please? Kate?
Could I add to that motion, the, John didn't mention the variety of forms attached to JJIAB. I assume you included that, you meant to include that in this motion.
Thank you, David. Amendment accepted.
Thank you.
All right. All. All right. All right. Any questions, concerns about these policies? David?
Yeah, I still have a problem with the Staff Conduct with Students one. It's under prohibited contact, second bullet point. I suggested language before, I wrote the language, it didn't get put in here, or if it did, I didn't write it very well. It says, "Singling out a particular student or student for personal attention or friendship beyond the normal student, excuse me, teacher-student relationship." That just sounds awkward and wrong to me. It really is, "Singling out a particular student for personal attention or friendship beyond inappropriate parent-teacher-student relationship" would be better, because there are certain attentions that's beyond the normal student-teacher. Like, some student needs special attention. That's beyond what is the normal teacher-student relationship. It's just awkward language, and I think it's better handled by the word "appropriate." Do you understand what I'm trying to say? Does everybody understand what I'm trying to say? It's, when you say "beyond normal," that means any kid that needs extra attention can't get it. What we're really getting at is inappropriate behavior. It should be "beyond inappropriate student," and I don't like the words, "singling out a particular student." Actually, I would take out the word "beyond." Singling out a particular student or students for personal friendship and personal attention and friendship, that is not, that is not appropriate, and that is not an appropriate student-teacher-student relationship.
I guess, I'd be interested in your guidance, Meredith, but to me, the language doesn't offer very good guidance. I would agree with David. I think to say that "beyond the normal" is not a very good way of offering guidance as to what's appropriate and what isn't appropriate. But, you know, my experience on the policy committee began this evening.
Mine?
And so I think what I would, I think what I would recommend that we do right now is to, would be to withdraw this particular policy, bring it back to the committee, and review it, and then bring it back to the board upon that review.
All right.
I would second that.
All right. So, so the motion is amended to approve... Yes, well...
The motion is amended to exclude...
Yes.
GBEBB.
Okay. Second. Okay. All right. So all those in favor of approving the policies with the exclusion of JBEBB? Please raise your hand. All right. And then we have policies for first reading. We have two policies for first reading. So those are not, we have no motion on that, we don't have to vote on theirs. I will say, I did find some errors in there that I'd like to pass on to the chair. I'll just pass them on, some typos.
I found a lot more than typos. This, to be honest with you, the policy and the rule is almost incomprehensible. It started off as one attempt, and I helped with that one attempt, then it got, this is almost an example of where too many committees get involved in some sort of a multi-headed hydra. There's definitions added in at the top that don't match what's in the body. This thing really needs to be completely rewritten, John. This needs a lot of work. It was an attempt, I think, some of the changes that were early suggested were not made...
Are you talking about the first, which of these policies?
Both of them. It's almost as if the iPad Initiative Committee added some revisions, and the revisions don't work, because they add definitions that not followed within the body, add words that haven't been defined in the body, and then certain changes that were made weren't made, and, I mean, I could go on and on, but this is painful.
It's okay. Spare a little.
I was trying to be crisp.
Meredith, I think... So just to address that a little bit, at the time of the last policy committee meeting, which was prior to the election, prior to the appointment of new policy committee members, this policy had been drafted with some input from the iPad Committee and vetted a little bit by Gary and Jeff, but it had not yet received, we had not yet received legal feedback on the draft policy. However, given the timeline of the iPad rollout, it was recommended that we move it forward, at least in a first reading, so that we could have some discussion about the policy itself. Basically, the gist is, and I appreciate that it may be unartful, and so we're happy to continue working on that, but the intent is to have our student computer use policy reflect the use of devices such as iPads, because really, the way the policy was written previously, it did not cover the use of such devices. So I appreciate that we have work to do, we certainly are aware of that, and at the policy committee meeting, we're happy to take any of your suggestions.
So at our policy committee meeting, that would be the appropriate time to talk about, like, typos and grammatical errors and that kind of thing? Okay.
Yeah. I'm going to hand mine to John at this point, but John will set a policy meeting, you know, probably in the next few weeks, he'll be in touch with policy, policy committee members, and Meredith, you can address the dates that best work with your staff as well, and we'll come up with a policy meeting that will be, the board will be advised of that date as well.
Just to, if I get an email of it, I would be glad, just tonight I went through this and found a lot of things, I'd be happy, I don't really want to draft any more documents, because I tried this twice, and I will list what I think are problems without suggesting solutions, and by number, put it in PDF or something. And the draft person should understand how to draft an integrated document. That's one of the major problems here, it's not integrated.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David. All right. Okay. E, consideration to approve the following athletic and extracurricular staff nominations. I think, maybe just, if we can nominate them as a slate, please. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the following athletic and extracurricular staff nominations as reflected in the agenda packet for the high school and middle school.
Second?
A second, then?
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right. Item F, consideration to appoint Elizabeth Milroy and reappoint Fred Sturtavant as school representatives to the Community Services Advisory Commission. Terms to expire, their terms will expire December 31st, 2014. Do I have a motion, please?
I move to appoint Elizabeth Milroy and reappoint Fred Sturtavant as school representatives to the Community Services Advisory Commission, terms to expire on 12/31/2014.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor? Then we have a couple of maternity leave requests. Item G, consideration to approve a leave of absence request for high school teacher Erin Hill during the 2012, 2013 school year. Do I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve a leave of absence request for high school teacher Erin Hill during the 2012, 2013 school year.
All right. Do I have a second, please? Any discussion?
Maybe just one suggestion. I know, I guess there's a standard, if you request a leave of absence, you know, here's the compensation impact, here's the health insurance, you know, is my, does everyone who submits this, the way that sometimes they're written, it doesn't confirm their understanding, like, they may have to pay a certain amount. Should we, as a board, assume that they understand that? In other words, I don't want us to approve just a leave of absence, just, it's called a leave of absence, and it teaches us, well, you approved it, and it didn't reflect that. So is there a way, maybe when these are submitted, it would just say, you know, I understand that, you know, here's the protocol. Does that make sense? Because if you're approving a leave of absence, and it's not really specified, well, what does that entail? I'm a little concerned, you know, someone could say, well, you approved it, and someone helped me out.
I would say that the terms are specified in the teacher contract. I understand the point, and in this particular case, the teacher contract specifies the details around a leave of absence.
Okay.
And we don't cover anything.
Okay.
For the record.
Yeah. It may be helpful for us to know that, particularly new board members, to have it sketched out, what we do cover, what's covered by law, and with contract and teachers who aren't under continuing...
I hate being in the end, because I have to get, look around this guy. But I have a question. It would be helpful, we get these a lot, and it always questions come up about what's written here versus what's in the teacher contract. It would be helpful if we get this, for you to note, is there, and also, it's somewhat inconsistent what our policy is and when we grant these. I think at some point, we have to come up with a policy, or a consistent, if it's not a policy, place an understanding, but I think at the very least, what we should do is, so we don't have to worry about what the content of this is, for you to look at these sorts of requests and tell us, are they asking for more or less than what they're entitled to leave a law or the contract?
And just briefly, David, what I would say is, my intention is to try to do that in the agenda notes, which is where I indicated that they have been reviewed, and that the principal and I support those requests. So I wouldn't endorse a request if I felt it was inappropriate, but I think the general topic that you're raising, which is, are we being consistent, is a good topic for board orientation, but I would defer to board...
And just to make clear, I did read the agenda notes, but I always try to do things, I always like to have the public know what we're doing, so I think it's worthwhile that when we get to something like this, that you state for the record that these requests are consistent with law and the contract, so they're not asking for something unusual. And then the second issue is something I think we have to figure out what we're going to do about. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. Item H, consideration to approve an extended leave of absence request for high school teacher Sarah Steiner during the 2011, 2012 school year. And I think the letter's in your packet. Do I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the extended leave of absence requested for high school teacher Sarah Steiner during the 2011, 2012 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions?
I did have a question. The extended leave of absence, exactly what span of time does that cover, and are there portions of that section of time that are covered under different regulations?
So the first 12 weeks, as you know, are covered under FMLA. The additional time is without compensation, and the teachers are responsible beyond that for picking up that their share of the health insurance, the portion of the health insurance costs otherwise would be paid by the district. So in this particular case, we're running from the end of February through the end of the school year. The teacher doesn't return to work until August, but July and August are not typically teacher work months.
Thank you. Anyone else?
One further point, just, again, Meredith, it would be helpful, I know the answer to this, but again, it would be helpful to state it for the record, that in addition to whatever this request is in compliance with law and contract, it would also be helpful to assure the public, this is sort of a due diligence, that there is adequate coverage in whatever school, for when somebody wants to leave their mid-school year or the following year, we have what, you've done, you've talked to the DLT, and they feel that this, we can adequately do this.
I have talked to the DLT, and we feel we can adequately do this, and we do have coverage.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
All right. All those in favor? Great. Item number nine, committee reports. I think we, were you prepared to discuss finance quickly?
I, yes. Yes, I am. As my last duty, as the previous finance chair, we met on November 29th for the second of three workshops to discuss the big drivers in the budget. First workshop was around district financial audits and controls. The second, in the second workshop, we heard very comprehensive reports from three different departments, facilities, transportation, and food services. And I would like to thank Greg Miles and Janet Hoskins and Peter Esposito for their work in pursuit, in producing and presenting those reports. And the final of those workshops will be run by Michael Moore, and will be held, I believe, on January 24th, and I think will address demographics, programmatic changes, and staffing.
Thank you, John, and thank you again for your services, finance chair last year.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. School board agenda requests. David, you've already brought one up, the iPads.
Yes.
Okay. And so that's been noted. Any other agenda requests for our next meeting? You can certainly call Meredith or myself if something comes up, and that goes for the public as well. Item number 11, announcements of upcoming meetings.
There is no policy date, but we will otherwise not meet until 2012. The regular board meeting is January 13th. There is a co-curricular steering committee meeting, which is my committee, but Elizabeth is the board representative to that committee, so that meeting will be held this Thursday.
Thursday, 3:15.
When you say there's no policy date, is your intention that there would be a policy meeting this month?
No.
Thank you.
He sat with beer.
Thank you!
I'm prepared to have a policy meeting. Let's meet on Christmas Eve.
Well, thank you very much. And so, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second? Second, our new board members? All those in favor? Thank you very much. I know. Wow.
Nice.